If we can, if you need another five seconds to finish up, that's fine, but at six o'clock, we're ready to go. Jim, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. So we'll go through for our study session notes. We've got three major items tonight. And so the first item is going to be the review of our city council meeting, which I'll take you through. The second item, I'm going to defer to J.D. McCauley to talk about our personnel policies and procedures manual revision. J.D.'s done a fair amount of good work to get this in a more compliant mode and has had a lot of different folks looking at it. And I think we've got a pretty good product to work with, but we want to give you the results of that tonight. And then item three is going to be our executive session, but regardless of the timeframe involved, that's going to be at the end of the city council meeting based on external attorneys and other advisors that'll be dialing in for that engagement at 7:30 PM.
And we'll move to the council conference room at that time.
Correct. So with that, I'll go through the agenda for tonight. And I'll skip right to item five, which is under planning and development. This is for the final reading of ordinance number 2020-34, amending Article Three of the zoning districts. And this has to do with the special exemptions within the neighborhood preservation overlay. This is something that has been gone through council multiple times. This is just for the final reading. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions on it. Or Libby, who's really the SME on this, would be available as well. But again, what we're trying to do is through planning commission request is amend the Article Three, Section 3.8.6 for neighborhood preservation quarter overlay districts. So I'll pause there for any questions we have from mayor or council on item five.
Lindsey, the planning commission already has the request for such an exemption at its next meeting. Is that right? Oh, yes. I'm sorry. That's right. I'm sorry. Yeah, BZA, so.
So this basically gives the BZA the authority to change? Is that basically how I remember it? Okay.
I think it's a much needed revision, even as we're undergoing the complete revision. I think it's timely, particularly for Hammond, the Hammond House B and B.
Yes, sir. All right. And nothing else heard on that topic. We'll move to item six under elections. And that would be the final reading of ordinance 2020-35, in complying with sections 10-1 and 10-2 of the Code of Laws in North Augusta, South Carolina by setting dates for municipal party primaries, conventions, and partisan general elections, times for filing of nominating petitions, certification of candidates by parties, and certification of candidates by municipal election commission. So essentially what this did was changed our timeline from a 30-day window to file from the primaries to a 45-day. And Kelly, who's here, our city attorney, had been involved in that pretty significantly to make sure that we were going to be in the right to do it this way. I think this puts us in legal good standing and is actually a requirement for us to do so. So this will be the final reading of that ordinance, which would set the timeline for the entry of candidates into the primary or conventions from 9:00 AM December 14th, ending at noon on December 21st. So again, instead of doing a filing in January, now you have to have candidates that would have to file in December 14th to 21st specifically. Are there any questions from mayor or council on this particular item?
Kelly, the time was extended to give overseas vote citizens and military a chance to respond or to...
Yeah, it's to meet a federal requirement.
But who, what's the timeline to prepare the ballots such that they can...
Well, we already had the 45 days from the time that the municipal election commission certifies candidates. There was already 45 days from that point to the election. And so the two 45 days are met.
Okay.
And, you know, I guess it's up to the election commission, or actually, yeah, the election commission. The parties handle the primaries and ballots and whatever, whereas the municipal election commission will handle the regular election itself.
Does Cynthia Holland make the ballot? If it's an overseas citizen, she's the one that prepares?
Yeah, I think we generally have them do it, but that's...
Okay. Okay. I just...
But this gives the sufficient time for them to do that.
And the city is not obligated for that, for the primaries to do anything? It would either be...
We just have to...
Make sure it's...
Our only requirement is to set the dates for all these things. And we need to make sure we have the specific or the required timeframe for each event.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or clarification needed by council or mayor? Hearing none. Move to item number seven, which is resolution number 2020-56, the resolution authorizing distribution of a one-time bonus payment of employees in lieu of a merit-based increase in 2020 and authorizing distribution of a 2% merit-based employee pay raise in 2021. So as we discussed in the previous study session with this, what we'd essentially be doing is providing a 1% bonus payment that is not tied to, you know, merit or performance, that is strictly a bonus payment for eligible employees.
Bonus payment for eligible employees.
And that we would enact the merit-based requirements or pay raise as a 2% aggregate starting in January of 2021. That would be based off the performance evaluations, which completed in November of this year. So you have a more closely aligned, if you will, performance feedback to the actual merit increase in your paycheck as that goes forward. I did get a call from one of the council members last week looking for some additional information on this item. And really just to reassure the council that the merit-based increase still goes into effect. It goes into effect in January 2021. By doing this, you're not taking a merit-based increase off the table. What you're doing is replacing that with a bonus, if you will, here in December, and then going with the merit and starting in 2021. And so I'll certainly pause for any questions from council or Mr. Mayor on this particular item. And you have a copy of the draft resolution or proposed resolution, I should say, and attachment number seven in your study packet.
Well, I guess my question would be, Kami, you've checked all these numbers on where the money, the different funds, the monies are coming from, and we've got it. I knew you'd say yes.
I don't know if this is a dumb question or not. Is this in lieu of any bonus that we've previously given?
So there's been a historical precedent, Councilman, that the city has done bonuses in the past. The plan for this coming year was not to have done a bonus, or at least this was relayed to me through staff. And then when we looked through the different options based on the overall fund levels, and also to give the staff, quite frankly, the employees, more time to get used to a non-bonus structure, if you will, we wanted to do at least one more bonus here this year and then move to the merit increase for January 21.
Yeah. And all previous bonuses have always been if funds were, residual funds were available, not again, want to impact, you know, the capital projects fund over a surplus of money moved to the capital project sales tax at the end in the years. This year, obviously, with the uncertainty of our revenues and the reduction in them, I think this is what we talked about as a way to not shock expectations of what's happened in the past.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I support this initiative. I just want to make sure that we've got a good communication plan internally. And have we developed how we're going to effectively communicate this to staff? Because I just want to make sure that this goes over well with staff, especially people who may have had a different understanding of what council was going to do. And the last thing we want to have happen is staff not appreciate and understand what's behind this. Can someone comment on our communication plan with staff?
So Councilman, what'll end up happening is if this resolution is approved tonight, I'll send out a note to the entire workforce, kind of laying out what has occurred. Obviously, based on a lot of our employees watching the study session at the last council meeting, a lot of that word kind of went out regardless. I know J.D. McCauley, who's our HR director, has given me a fair amount of anecdotal evidence or input from employees that have reached out to him directly about this. Overall, the feedback has been positive once they've fully understood, hey, what the structure looked like. And we'll continue to message that throughout the workforce. And again, it's good that we're talking about the methodology in which we're going to deliver a bonus or a pay increase as opposed to not doing one. And I would also commend the directors and the senior managers here in the staff for the work they've done over the last couple of months, because it's been pretty challenging to really find that trade space between expenditures and understanding that personnel and people are our most important asset, to make sure that we've taken an appetite suppressant on other things to allow us to really take care of our folks. I don't know if that answered your question or not?
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a concern that we are not, that the employees will get the bonus, but they will, this will not go toward their retirement system. The bonus will not. And that's a concern I have. We looked at 2% in the 2020 budget, a 2% merit. Now we're down to 1% merit.
Well, we're at a 2% merit for 2021.
Yeah, but... But right now, what you're talking about is a 1% merit.
No, actually, sir, we're talking a 1% bonus, not a 1% merit.
Okay, 1% bonus. But I still think it should be tied into their retirement.
So when we did the analysis, there were two factors that we really took a look at. One is our, number one, our ability to fund it. And so if you do a 2% merit increase back to July, you know, the cost factor of that is significantly higher. And then the second factor that we really took a look at was we weren't going to be able to touch as many employees. So by going through a retirement system contribution, which I know is certainly, depending on which spectrum of the population you're talking to, the more senior folks, the folks that are closer to retirement, if you ask them probably individually, and I know some people have talked to council members, they probably would err on wanting to have the merit for that purpose to be able to... for, for that purpose, to be able to add more credits for their retirement. The issue we ran into is, we have a lot, a, a large chunk of the workforce that was not going to be influenced at all by, you know, that, that raise, if you will, the merit increase, based on the number of employees that we've absorbed onto the system here come January of 2020. So your, your concern is certainly valid, sir. The concern was, as we went through the staff analysis of, how do we, how do we basically meet the requirements or try to help out the most amount of employees across the spectrum? And so between the new employees and the old employees, we felt we could hit the largest spread doing that.
In your information that you're giving to the, to the staff, I think you need to, I think you need to really be aware that a lot of the employees were looking for the 2% raise. We promised, which we approved in December of last year, to take effect in July 1 of 2020. I know COVID came in, the revenues weren't there, I understand all that. But I still believe we are short circuiting ourselves by not tying it to, excuse me, by not tying it in with their retirement system. So I will not support this.
Okay, but this, let me comment if I may, Jim. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I will clarify, one thing is that the, the dollars available for this, for the bonus are equal to what the 1%. The 2% for six, the, the numbers of the money we put in the budget, 2% effective July, that amount of money that was in the budget is the same, or very nearly the same, as the 1% bonus pool that we're using this year. So from a standpoint of employees getting, the money that will be distributed is essentially what was in the budget, it's just not in a form that contributes to their retirement count. And I, and I understand that. We made a conscious decision in discussions before we proposed the revised budget. One of the absolute requirements was that the money be available, and I pushed for the 2% raise, and we got to the end of the year. And I became aware only at the end of the year that when we said a bonus to all employees, it really wasn't all employees, it was only those that met certain longevity requirements as well as evaluation requirements. Am I trending in the right direction, J.D., if I get off base straight?
Yes, sir.
So that's why I, I supported it, was it's a broader distribution. More people are going to get the bonus money than would have otherwise been included in the raise. And, and the dollar pool is equal to what it would have been. There's no reduction in the amount of money that will be distributed to the employees. And we've got the commitment, and we're putting it in writing, that the 2% raise is effective January. So we're talking about a six-month interval. And I, and I appreciate your concern for the employees, and, and I share that. But this was how we arrived at where we are. So thank you.
Real quick, so what Bob brings up with the retirement, I mean, how much do we match as the city? 2%, 3%? It's not a match? I guess what I'm, are we talking about for the last six months, average pay? I mean, how much are we talking about? 50 bucks? 100 bucks? Just out of curiosity, I mean, it's not a great number. I mean, I, I definitely want it to go, go forward. I mean, it's the same thing cash-wise they would have received, minus the, the retirement. But I mean, is it, I guess my question is, because if we're not matching and it's just pension, how much are we talking about percentage-wise? That, that they might be out, 1%, half a percent, 2%?
I can't say I can give you, you know, that kind of level of granularity, but I can certainly answer that question on the follow side and provide that to the council at large.
I mean, I mean, I support what we're doing, I just, you know, because I'm sure that question will be raised. And, you know, how, how much are the ones, like Bob was saying, that was expecting it in June? Would, would they really and truly be out?
We can, J.D. can give us a little bit more information if you'd like.
Well, okay, go ahead. While you're walking up there, let me just say, you know, the merit system, as, as I've had discussions, and I, we haven't finalized the ground rules, but, you know, it's not, it's, everybody doesn't get 2% because that's the cost of living. Some people are going to get up, maybe up to five, and some are not going to get any. So, you know, the 2% is always a, a dollar, go ahead.
So Eric, to answer your question, it's a pension, it's not like a 401K where we're matching contributions into a fund. The, the detriment to someone who's going to retire is they'd have to work an additional six months at their new rate, which would be a 2% increase in January, to make up for this change. So it's just a, a length of service they'd have to complete. Because when you retire, it takes your highest 12 quarters. And so this would be, you know, just two more quarters for those employees to have to work to, to reach that amount.
All right, well, that makes sense, and I assume we have not anybody, hopefully that's not ready to leave in the next six months or so, but.
Yes, sir. Any other questions from mayor or council on this topic? Okay, our final one will be under item number eight, planning and development. The Planning Commission Recommendation Memorandum Number 20 dash 033 and Project Staff Report, so number Alpha November Zuliet 20 Tac 036, Mayfield Drive, Greenway Extension, Received Information. So the bottom line on this is, this is a annexation zoning review for a piece of land that's near the, the northern end of the, the Greenway. So if you, if you take your bike or you run out to the, the terminus of the Greenway now, you end up in the cul-de-sac of a neighborhood. Did that last week, so it was good for me to see. And this is really talking about a parcel of land just east of that that allows the Greenway to potentially be extended up to the road. And so that would allow us to, or require us to zone that as P for public use to do that. And that is the item that's before the council, and that is the item that's before the council tonight.
Can I ask a question as I read this? Are we talking, has this property been annexed? So we didn't, Tom says no. So, so we need to annex the property first and then zone it? What's the process? So we're doing it together in this case, or is it always together, and I just didn't?
It's not always together, it was, but we will do this together.
Okay, so basically from the planning commission, we talked about an annexation, and then the designation of, of zoning of P.
Correct.
And that will be at some point in the future, since we're receiving information from the planning commission tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So that covers the agenda items, unless there's any other comments or questions from the council about, you know, our first item on the study session, which is the agenda for the council meeting. Are there alibis for this item? Okay. Hearing none, we're going to move to item two, Human Resources, the City of North Augusta, Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual Revision. Again, you have in your packet, attachment number two in your study session, is the memorandum from J.D. McCauley, our HR director, or manager. And so it kind of goes through the line of the folks that have been consulted, and also does a roll-up, if you will, of the changes, major changes at the macro level. But I'll defer to Mr. McCauley for any comments or updates you want to give on this one.
I'll be brief, but this was a great project to, to be involved with. I was able to talk with our directors, our employees, about things that they wanted to see added to the personnel policy manual, as well as reformat it, and also bring up our existing policies to best practice standards. And Kelly, you'd appreciate up to legal standards as well, kind of modernized it. And it also makes it, I'm hoping, to be more of a living document. As you see, it's formatted very similarly to how the state's Human Resources Manual is formatted. So if we ever need to change it, it should be quite easy to add or amend. And like Jim mentioned, it's been externally reviewed, and then also internally reviewed by our administration, attorney, and directors and managers.
Hey, Dave.
Yes, sir.
On the updated vacation accrual rates?
Yes, sir.
What's the existing rate now that you accrue, and what's the proposed?
So it's a chart, it's, it goes upon your years of service. We start our employees out at less than a day of vacation. And all I did was bump it up to when you start, you're not allowed to use your vacation until you're here for six months after probation, as you know. But all I did was bump it up so that when you're, are able to use it, you are accruing starting at one day. So, but that, what I had also noted was, there's no potential financial impact, because the maximum amount we pay out still is 360 hours. So even though you accrue more, we're not going to pay you out more when you leave us.
Okay. How about the holidays? The number now and what's proposed?
Correct. We, we added two holidays, they're federal holidays. We took away one, which was the Confederate Memorial Day, which, we took that off, and then we added two, which specifically.
Presidents?
Presidents' Day, I believe, and Veterans' Day.
Yes, those are good ones.
Now, they, they matched, you know, the only one federally that we're missing is the Columbus Holiday. We decided to not add more than, than two. And then all the others are in line with both state holidays, except for Confederate Memorial Day. And then the only one we add that's not on state or federal is Good Friday, is one that we, we, we recognize.
And we also have the Personal Day?
Yes, sir.
Is that still in?
The Personal Holiday is there, that rounds out the holidays, that's floating. Not tied to a day. Yes, sir.
How about the sick leave?
Sick leave remains unchanged, because that starts at a day of sick leave that you accrue, you start at eight hours. And that doesn't change. One thing we did change to sick leave is we allowed it to be used for care of your parents. Right now, our policy doesn't allow for that. And as you guys can imagine, the sandwich generation, where you're taking care of your parents and your kids, that you'd want to be able to use sick time to care for your elderly parent.
I like the changes, they're very, very compatible. I like them.
Great.
What, what do the changes cost us?
Only time lost, if you're, if you're, no financial impact to all the changes. Kami, correct me if I'm wrong. The, the goal here was to do what HR really tries to do, which is increase our employee benefits without adding to the costs for the city. That's a lot of our programs that we do, try to encapsulate that goal.
On the federal holidays, are employees, you know, paid? I mean, I, I pay my guys for the major holidays, so that's why I was asking if we added two holidays. Then obviously, if we're paying our employees, where, where's the difference in makeup coming from?
So it would be, they would be paid, that's why I was saying about time loss, so they would, would have been paid that day anyway, it's just we're not asking the report to work. So it's not more money out of the bottom line, it just goes from reporting to work to being off for the holiday.
I'm used to paying people by the hour, can't you tell?
Oh, well, yeah, we do that as well, we do that as well.
Yeah, Councilman, in practical terms, like for this past Veterans' Day, you know, as, as I was here in the office trying to get something done with, you know, county and some other, you know, government organizations, and it was just, it wasn't happening because nobody was there. So it was just, we could do internal business, which is fine, but we couldn't do a whole lot externally.
No, I, I mean, it makes sense, I, I get it. I just try to rationalize it from the, from the money standpoint, because, you know, to me, I have lost production if I don't have a day, but I still pay my guys even though we're not there. So, and, and I see what you're saying, we're not losing any revenue, so they would have been paid anyway, because it's more of a salary thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that kind of gets into the, kind of balancing some of the, you know, just look in a holistic way, we do employee compensation, if you will. So obviously, not, not everyone's excited about the, the merit piece versus the bonus. But one of the ways we're trying to, you know, reach out to our employees and, and do right by them, and quite frankly, that's really J.D. and the directors who've really spirited this along with Rachel, was really figuring out, you know, how do we, how do we take care of our employees? And there's a lot of different ways we can do it, but I think this is an additional way we can assist our employees and, and show the, kind of how the city appreciates their service, and this is one way we do it, which is your time.
If I can, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
Couple things, one, what is donated medical leave policy?
That's a, a new policy that, it follows IRS standards of being able to donate medical leave for folks that are out for, obviously, medical reasons. There's a cap on that, so if you were an employee, you couldn't donate more than, I believe it's 40 hours a year to somebody, and then also there's a cap on how much you can receive. So folks that have exhausted their sick time or vacation time, and they're out of leave, but yet they still have FMLA, which gives them 12 weeks in a year. This allows an employee who has extra sick leave to give it to that employee. Has to be approved by directors and administration, but they're able to help that person, you know, continue to be paid while they're out for a medical reason. And there are limits to it, and the reason why I bring up IRS is because it's, it, it wouldn't be taxable, it's straight across. There's, there's a, the IRS gives the parameters that govern this program.
Okay, all right, thanks. The, the only other thing I would say is, I, I would not support Presidents' and Veterans' Day being off. It frustrates me to know when, how many days off banks and local governments are off. The typical business works those two days. And when we can't, when the private sector can't perform business. And specifically here at City Hall, that's, that's a detriment to the, to the public. I mean, I get it from employee perspective, but I think we as a society take way too many days off now, holidays. So. I only recognize about four or five holidays, I mean, it's.
You're a tough lecturer, I know that now, it's just.
No, it's, it's different in the private sector.
It, it is, and, and it's, and it's frustrating. I mean, that, that, let's, let's take tho, those days, I mean, yes. What, what happens when the senior citizens that are, are retired citizens need to go to the, want to go to the rec center? Well, it's now closed on those days. I mean, it's just, I, I just, I'm sorry, but maybe I'm just screwed here. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not a fan of adding more holidays. I, I think, I think we take off more holidays than, than most private sector businesses, except maybe bankers over here, but.
Where bankers' hours came from?
Are there any other questions from council or Mr. Mayor? Preference the Personnel Manual?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what is social media policy?
Social media policy is something we were lacking. It specifically addresses employees' behavior in an online environment. It, previously, what we currently use is, certain policies apply to online behavior the same way as regular behavior at work. This just puts it into clear terms, what's prevented from employees, for employees, what they do online through social media. So it's explicit in what we prevent.
I, I've got to ask Kelly, is that, I mean, because that seems like that's infringing on personal rights when, I, I mean, I understand if they're at work posting on work, but if they're, you're, I'm, I'm assuming this, when they go home, if they post something inappropriate, that's, that's grounds for dismissal? Or something we deem, or however it's deemed?
I'll give you my famous HR answer, it depends.
Right.
So that is, that is true mystery.
And I do understand, I, I mean, we, I've seen this a lot on social media with people shaming different, you know, police departments, fire departments, whatever, because of the way some of the officers and firemen, or paramedics, or whoever. I, I don't know, I have a tough time with that one, too, because, you know, it's like, you know, once you're off of my clock, I, I don't own you. You, you have a right to express how you feel, I, that's a tough one.
Councilman, if I could, just as a, so in the previous organization I served in, we had a social media policy. And that was helpful for us, because we had an employee who was one of our Public Affairs Officers, thought he was posting his personal thoughts on his own Facebook and Twitter feed and was not. He actually did it on the Fort Gordon official page, that involved comments about the chain of command and, you know, elected officials and whatnot. And we were able to take disciplined reactions against him, because we had a social media policy in place.
Well, no, I, I, I get that for like city-run things, or if somebody were to comment on one of our city sites, that's an employee, I, I get that, but does this overreach into their personal?
No.
Okay, that, that's what I was confused on, okay. As long as it doesn't overreach into what they think personally, I, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
Just, just to clarify this, social media policy is not something that we here internally made up. This would be kind of a, a standard best practice social media policy that's been vetted by attorneys, and Kelly's looked at it as well. So, very, very specifically to, to not infringe on, you know, NLRB, you know, concerted effort, activity, all of that, as well as, you know, personal liberties like you're referring to.
Right, I mean, you know, like I have my own personal page, you know. And again, we're probably held in a different light, because we're elected officials. So I've learned to just scroll and bite my tongue sometimes, but, but, you know. But, um, but, you know, we have, I don't know how many employees we have in the city, but I would just hate to see somebody put something on their personal page and it get taken out of context and coming to there. And I do understand, like, if they were to get on, you know, the Parks and Rec and bash, you know, Rick Meyer in front of, you know, definitely that. If that's the kind of stuff we're talking about, then you won't have any beef from me on that.
The, this section is on page 14, if you have the policy in front of you. And it specifically outlines the city respects the right to use social media during your personal time. However, you cannot access during business hours. Any employee who posts on a social media site who have identified themselves as an employee must make it clear they are expressing their own viewpoints, not those of the city. It also reminds folks that these posts can be read by anyone. It says that if you post obscene or harassing material, something that's unlawful, something that violates the city policy, the result may be discipline up to you and including termination. So.
Okay.
It, for the most part, it, it's just code of conduct.
Okay.
JD, how about the remote work policy? If we're going to do streaming again, we probably need to have that for when it's approved.
Correct.
Council needs to have that, so we'll know what we're doing.
Sure. So that policy came about during the shutdown. It was a policy we kind of had to pull out of our back pocket to implement, to make sure the workforce could operate remotely. And so all we're doing is codifying this into official policy with this.
This, the remote work policy is something that, once we opened back up, we found needed to be put into place because we did have some individuals who, out of necessity, had to remote, remote work temporarily or for a long-term period. And it just, again, code of conduct, and it standardizes decisions, processes, things to consider when we allow remote work.
Any other questions on the personnel policy handbook? So again, this is a study session item. There's no vote required tonight on this. You've got a couple of weeks to kind of chew on this before the next council meeting. And if you have individual questions, feel free to drop me a note, or JD or Rachel, and we'll run that to ground as far as kind of your individual concerns for it goes out there. And if we make any modifications to that based on counsel input, we'll make sure that's highlighted as we go through for the next reading, or for the first reading, I should say.
Can I make one final comment? I don't think JD ever does a good enough job of selling himself. He's worked on this for a really long time, and he's done a really good job coordinating with multiple directors, labor attorneys, city attorney. This is, this was a huge, huge endeavor, and I know it's a big document, and it's comprehensive, but it is very, as straight to the point as you can possibly get it without being too simple. So he's done a good job.
Attaboy, JD.
And I have to apologize. I somehow overlooked the email of December 3rd, which transmitted the document to each of us, three files. So, so I apologize for not catching that earlier. Sharon shook her head and told me that I did get it, so I found it. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Council, any other questions on the personnel policy?
Open mic night. Sharon reminded me that, so procedurally, what I was advised of is that we want to make sure there'll be, not to surprise you, but there will be two items for this on the agenda next time we get together on the 21st. One will be to remove all existing personnel policies, to make sure that we nullify those. And then the next one will be to, a resolution to approve what is the new personnel policy manual. Just wanted to make sure, and just hopefully nobody does anything wrong in between those two parts. So that's procedurally how, and then from that point forward, as you guys can see, it's supposed to start January 1, between the time that you hopefully approve this, we will get all the employees this. And it's something I think we can be proud of and put on our website and make it a public document. And let everyone sign that they've received it. So, thank you all.
Thank you, JD. All right, Council, the, the final item is item three, which is under legal executive session, which is a request from the city administrator or of the city administrator. Again, we'll be doing that after the city council meeting this evening in the council conference room. So with that, I've completed all the items here on the study session, and I turn it over to Mayor and Council. Are there any other further questions here under study session for tonight?
No, I think we've had discussions, and I believe probably at the next meeting, we'll go back to virtual meetings because of the continuing increase in the number of COVID cases. But tonight with the executive session, we felt that it was best to practice our social distancing and masks tonight and have that discussion in person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as a joiner to that, the planning commission is moving to virtual, BZI is moving to virtual, so most of our other boards are moving to that direction. And just based on the, the overall positive rates within the city limits, to include within city employees, we felt it was a requirement to move to a virtual council, starting on 21st of December.
You were looking, you were looking forward to me wearing my nice Christmas suit.
That was one of the reasons we went virtual. We just hit a telegraph, teleph...
What were y'all in a group text that didn't tell? Because you didn't want to see my new suit with the, like, the lights on it?
Yeah, we wanted to see that. We really did.
I'll, I'll wear it sitting in front on my kitchen table. I'll even put it on Zoom.
Yes. That way, if we don't want to see it, we can click you off.
Get Ricky to put one of them little pictures up in front of me.
And sir, I have 6:40 PM. Recommendation is to adjourn, give the council a break, and then be prepared to re-adjourn at 7:00 PM for the city council.
Absolutely. Any other thoughts, comments?
I have a motion to recess.
Do I have a second? Mr. Brooks, I think I heard first. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Note that Ms. Carpenter is not here tonight. Thank you. Word.
Call this meeting of the City Council to order, I'd ask you to stand for the invocation and the pledge. Dear God, we meet tonight on the anniversary of a fateful day in our nation's history. We think about those who gave their lives that day. And we're thankful for the men and women in uniform today, serving in places around the world, ready to take action to preserve our freedoms. We face a COVID virus which is once again spreading throughout our community. Please let those affected and those that are hospitalized return to health and well-being. We are so very thankful for the men and women serving the people of the city of North Augusta. We ask for special effort to keep them safe. And for this council tonight and in the future, give us wisdom as we consider the items before us so that the actions we take are certainly for the betterment of this city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record show that Councilwoman Carpenter is absent tonight, all others are present. Council, you've been provided the study session and council meeting minutes of November 16, 2020. If there are no corrections or additions, they'll stand approved as provided. Just a reminder before we get started, well, we got two people here, so I'll skip the podium security and the citizen, I think you all know how that works, we won't spend time on it. Moving to item number five under unfinished business, first item is, unfinished business first item is ordinance number 2020-34, amending Article III zoning districts of the North Augusta Development Code, Chapter 18 of the City of North Augusta, South Carolina Code of Ordinances. Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance on final reading?
Second.
Clifford, I think I heard.
Second.
And Mr. Presnell, second. Libby, would you give a quick overview, or Jim, if you want to, one of you, of what this ordinance is about? This is giving, I think, allowing special exemptions in the neighborhood preservation overlay district, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from citizens? Council? Hearing none? All in favor? Unanimous of those in attendance? Item number six, this is ordinance number 2020-35 complying with complying with sections 10-10-1 and 10-2 of the Code of Laws of North Augusta, South Carolina, by setting the dates for municipal party primaries, conventions, and general election, times for filing of nominated positions, petitions, certification of candidates by parties, and certification of candidates by Municipal Election Commission. Do I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on final reading? Mr. Brooks, Mr. Presnell, I'm sorry, Mr. Tool? You're gonna have to switch seats so I know when it's over here. Just a quick, I think the highlights of this ordinance, primary elections, if selected by a party, shall be held on February 9, 2021. The filing period is 9:00 a.m. December 14 until 12:00 noon on December 21, obviously 2020. And the election will for mayor and three members of city council will be held on Tuesday, April 27, 2021. Any comments from citizens? Council? Hearing none? All in favor? Unanimous for all attendees? Under new business now, item seven, this is finance resolution, this is finance resolution number 2020-56, a resolution authorizing distribution of a one-time bonus payment to employees in lieu of a merit-based increase in 2020, and authorizing distribution of a 2% merit-based employee pay increase in 2021. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Mr. McGee, Mr. Presnell? Mr. Clifford, would you give a quick overview of what this resolution entails? Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council, this resolution entails the distribution of a 1% bonus, which is not merit-based, but really for the vast majority of the workforce here inside the city, and then enacts a 2% merit-based increase to pay in January of 2021 based on their November performance reviews. There are some details in there about the caps, if you will, and which funds they come from. So, for example, not all of the funding comes from the general fund, it is split across multiple funds depending on where the employee salaries come from. And so that's outlined in detail there on the last paragraph and paragraph, or subparaphrase one. And I believe this will, as in previous discussions, benefit the most amount of employees this year and then move us into a merit-based system in the next year.
Thank you. Any comments from citizens? Council?
Mr. Mayor, I will not be, I am not in favor of this motion, so I will be voting against it.
And that's related to the pension benefit of certain employees? Gotcha, thank you. Any other comments from council? Any comments from citizens tonight? Council and comments beyond Mr. Brooks? Okay, hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Not unanimous, but the vote is four to one with Mr. Brooks dissenting? You're right, sorry. Can't count in my old age. I had the right that Mr. Brooks dissented, so I just couldn't figure out the rest of it, you got me off guard. Thank you, apologize for that. Moving on to item number eight. This is planning and development, it's Planning Commission Recommendation Memorandum Number 20-033 and Project Staff Report ANZ 20-036, Mayfield Drive, Greenway Extension. Receipt of information, council, this information will be received without objection? No objection, thank you. Okay. That takes care of the really formal items on the agenda, administrative reports tonight, do we have any?
Sir, not sure if this falls in this category, I believe we talked about it in study session already, but the intent within the staff here, at least from my perspective, is to move forward with a virtual city council meeting starting on the 21st of December, based on the current status of COVID and all within the governor's state of declaration, we can work with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, staff?
I just wanted, this is my time.
Sure.
I was just gonna say that, you know, it probably was a good idea, but I had some people ask me if this is why the city canceled the parade, and I just wanted to point out, that was, that's the Lions Club that does the parade, not the city. And we did not revoke the permit or anything like that. They decided on their own not to do the parade, which may be a good idea, but it was not the city that said we're not gonna have a parade.
Councilman, that's correct, thanks for putting that on the record. That was a decision by the Lions Club that, we received that information via the, not just the Lions Club, but the Chamber of Commerce. The city was prepared to support that event with public safety and other elements and deferred to their wishes to not run the event that day. Based on the number of floats available, I believe it was half or less than half of folks had committed to participating in that parade. And the hope is next year we'll be able to have a much larger event that everybody can participate with.
Okay, thank you. This is an opportunity for citizens present tonight, the two of you, or three, Count Lindsay, to comment on any item not on the agenda if you'd like to. Yes, sir, Mr. Corbett.
A form down in just, a form down in just a minute.
Okay, could you please state your name and address if you'd like to, state your address, optional, I guess.
Stetson Corbett, 434 Railroad Avenue, North Augusta. My question is about the primary elections due to the COVID protocols that are being put in place. Are there gonna be any provisions or changes to how we're going to do voting for the primaries? Early voting, anything like that?
You know, I'll be honest, I hadn't thought that far ahead, but maybe.
And I think I can answer that, and the city does not handle primaries. Primaries are handled by the parties. The only thing the city does is sets the dates when they're to be held by, and it's up to the parties how they handle that. Now, the general election, the Municipal Election Commission is in charge of that, and they will be making decisions as we get closer to that as how they will handle it.
Thank you, good question. I guess, Mr. Adams, I can personally ask you if you'd like to make any comments? Okay.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see him back in chambers. Okay, are there any further comments from council tonight? Mr. Presnell?
Yeah, since we're going back to virtual, I guess. In person, I just want to tell everybody, y'all have a, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I'm sure I'll tell you again on the 21st when we meet virtually, but, you know, this is the last time we'll probably see each other this year, so just hope everybody has a great holiday.
Okay, hearing none, let me just say that our study session was recessed for the purpose of an executive session, and there will be no decision made subsequent to that study session, so this meeting can be adjourned, is that correct?
Do you have to motion to go to executive session?
Okay. Okay, I think I understand procedurally, this meeting will be adjourned, and then we will reconvene the study session, at which time the only business will be the executive session, and we'll make a motion to go into executive session, and there will be no action taken after that tonight. Okay? This meeting's adjourned, and we will reconvene in the council conference room in five minutes. Thank you.